Good evening, everyone. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 16th, 2023. We are meeting in one government center in the first floor meeting room, hearing room, rather. Pursuant to Mass. General Law 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that the meeting is being recorded with both video and audio recording by Fall River Government TV, Mr. Craig Salvador, recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio or video or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Seeing none. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Kruger, sitting to my immediate right. This evening, our permanent members in attendance are John Frank, who's our Vice Chair, Jim Cawkins, our clerk, Dan DePere, Rick Sahadi, and myself, Joseph Pereira, as Chairman. Also joining us this evening are our alternate members, John Sylvia, sitting to my right, and Eric Kelly, sitting on the left end. Also representing Planning Department are Mr. Dan Aguirre at the far, my far-left Director of Engineering and Planning, and Chris Borino, our Assistant Planner. Nina, are all petitions to be considered, have all petitions to be considered, been probably advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, as amended?
Yes.
I declare the March 16th, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting to the Board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners that all interested persons, and all interested persons, that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of your petition before the Zoning Board of Appeals this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect on your title of your property. I urge you to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after the decision of the Board has been made. For example, there was a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan review. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multi-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which, in short, provides for citizen input on zoning Board-specific matters at the end of the evening. There is a sign-up sheet just outside the door on the table if you care to make public comment at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office, and one cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I would ask that everyone silence their phones, please. And that's going to include me, who's about to do this in two seconds. That's my favorite part of the day. Nobody can get me. All right. We begin with an item of old business. Item number 01, ASE Investments LLC, Care of Attorney Peter Salino, 69 Rear Alden Street, MAP J27, Lot 9. The applicant seeks a variance/special permit to construct 16 townhouse-style units, waiving the requirements in a CMD, which is a commercial mill zoning district. The 68,000-plus-square-feet parcel of land has no frontage on an accepted city street. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Care. For purposes of the record, Peter Salino, 550 Locust Street, Fall River, attorney to the petitioner. With me this evening is the petitioner.
David Saber.
As Mr. Chair indicated, the subject parcel is located at 69R Alden Street in Fall River. The parcel is a pre-existing lot that's the site of the former Parker Candy that burned down in 2010. The lot itself was created in 1948, and as Mr. Chair indicated, and as is in the publication, there is no frontage on Alden Street. The lot itself is accessed only by a Land Court easement, as depicted on the north side of the plan there, which is 30 feet in width, and that's what the access is to the site. The proposal is to construct 16 townhouse-style dwellings on this site, providing sufficient off-street parking. In terms of why we are here, we are here for two reasons and two reasons alone. The first is a variance for frontage. As the Board knows, in a CMD, we need 100 feet of frontage. We have none as a result of that easement. Second, a multifamily use is not allowed in a CMD district without a special permit. And as a consequence, we've also checked the box and filed for a special permit for the use as a multifamily establishment. So going into the arguments, first hardship, I'd submit to the Board, and the Board certainly knows, that the barometer here is shape, topography, soil conditions. We have a very oddly shaped lot. As I said, it's existed on the ground and on the plans at Land Court since 1948. Again, no access to the street but by right-of-way. Additionally, I think we have some topography issues to the west flowing towards the banks of the Quikashan River. I think, therefore, that we can certainly meet the burden for hardship. Next, when we look at the special permit side of things, and we talk about, is it substantially more detrimental than what's there, and how does it relate to the neighborhood? Starting with the neighborhood, to the northeast, you have the apartments at the Curtain Lofts. We're doing, or we're seeking to do apartments. They did apartments. Those apartments have worked well. They're full, and they're a nice use of that area of the city. Similarly, we have apartments to the east. They're doing apartments. We're asking to do apartments. So I would submit to you that, number one, it's completely consistent with the neighborhood as it is today. It was not consistent as it was in the early 1900s, and I think we're going to hear some opposition about why it is not in that same manner. But I would submit to you that that time has passed. The building burned down, and ultimately, we need to make the highest and best use of this piece of property. Next, I would submit to you that based on the size of the lot, only 68,000 square feet, the allowed uses in a CMD wouldn't be appropriate, because ultimately, the lot's not big enough to house that type of use. And finally, I'd submit to you that in the provision of off-street parking and accounting for two spaces per dwelling unit, we've sufficiently met the burden in terms of safety and traffic. Ultimately, we can house all the cars off the street and on the site, and I think that's important to the Board's analysis relative to a special permit. Lastly, I'd like to know for the record that this exact proposal was approved in February of 2020. Some of the Board members were not here, some were, but ultimately, Mr. Saber was unable to build that project, because if you remember, March of 2020, the world shuts down with COVID. So the variance lapsed. What we are asking for, if you reviewed the 2020 filing, is identical to that which this Board already granted. So with that, I'll submit to any questions that the Board may have, and Mr. Saber's happy to answer any questions about his plans or proposal.
Thank you. I believe that attached to what was sent out before are the previous approvals for this piece of property in 2020 and I believe in 2021. When we looked at a single building on this property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. This is substantially the same as what was approved pre-COVID. First, I want to understand, any questions from the Board?
I just have, how many bedrooms are going to be in each one of these units?
Yes, fair. The proposal is two bedrooms per unit, which ties to the two parking spaces per unit.
Are these going to be rental or are they going to be sold?
The plan is rental. Mr. Saber intends to own them and rent them.
Okay. The population that's going to be in there, is it going to be elderly?
The proposed price point for the rent is approximately $1,800, so I don't know. It's fair market rent, whoever comes forward.
I mean, I'm just going to be upfront. I can't vote on this.
Understood.
But I was in opposition a couple of years ago, and the reason why I was, as a citizen, is that it's mostly elderly people that are there, and when you put another group of people in there, and they're really in there tight, this is really, really tight, you know, we as a city, as citizens, dealing with that, where police are coming, you know, for complaints of this, that, and the other things. So that was my, as a citizen's, feeling with that. You're going to put a new group of people in there.
Right.
And five years down the road, when they get all these phone calls, the police, the taxpayers are paying for this. So that's, I just wanted to check to see.
Right.
Because I know you guys changed it. You're going to put a high-rise building there, which would have been kind of the same as we have, you know, with the Curtain Lofts, you know? And I think it's just my feeling with zoning, when we put all these different things, that's why we have all these issues in Fall River, because we put this here, we put that there, and it's already there, but if we can choose to make things better, you know what I mean? I know that probably-
Well, that's why we're not doing three bedrooms. We'll have a lot more families with a three bedroom.
Are they going to, so they're going to be townhouses with two bedrooms on?
Yeah, just two.
If I may just respond, just to, I understand the objection. I'm sure we're going to hear more objections, but just to refocus the discussion, this is a completely conforming project as it relates to the setback, so I understand the concern about it spreading out, but if you look, it's CMD, it's a 10-foot setback, and we comply with all that. So certainly here, I'm sure we're going to hear more opposition similar to that, but I'd just like to focus that we're asking for a special permit, which is a lower bar than a variance, and clearly, there's a hardship, in my opinion. Sorry, Mr. Sahadi.
Attorney Salino, could you go over the parking again with me?
Certainly. So we have 16 units proposed, and we have 35 parking spaces that are delineated on the plan. Each of the buildings and units is numbered, as you can see, 1 through 16 on the plan, and the parking runs along the north side of the site, as well as along the, would be really the east-southeast side of the site.
Which is in conformity, two spaces per unit.
Yes, correct. In fact, we exceed it. So we're at 35, so a little better than what's required.
Anyone else on the Board? Anyone here, first of all, from the planning side, any comment?
Just that, again, it was permitted previously, something to take into consideration. When similar relief was granted to mill complexes for the renovation into apartments, those two properties actually sought parking relief as well down to one space per unit. So I think it's important to note that this petition does not seek that same relief, that this is specific by use of special permit for multifamily housing. Regardless of the type of housing it is, that's not the purview of this Board with regards to the shape and the topography and the variance portion of it. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming parcel of land prior to subdivision control, so this is, this parcel exists as it exists, and this 30-foot right-of-way, if you look investigating the Land Court parcels, provides access to the multiple mills that are in the area as well as this parcel.
Yep. And my understanding is one half of the length of that easement is under your control, correct?
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And then lastly, even beyond the zoning relief that was granted a few years ago, the applicant took the next two steps and permitted all of the different land use permits needed, site plan review, and an order of conditions through the Conservation Commission, so those permits are in place.
Are they still enforced?
They're still, they're still in place.
Thank you.
They're still valid. And part of that was to ensure that the proposed future construction of the next phase of the Quikashan Rail Trail could be accommodated through the site, and that was determined by the Site Plan Review Committee at that time, and that easement is shown on the plans.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before I take public comment, I will remind anyone making comment that the purview of this Board is land use. We hear impassioned arguments for and against sites. We are, we live within the borders of Chapter 40A of Massachusetts General Law and Article 86 of our own zoning, our own city ordinances, so I just, I just ask for that courtesy. Anyone here to speak in favor of this petition?
Good evening, Board. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mr. Ken Fiola, the Executive Vice President of Bustelcon The Economic Development Consultants. I'm here tonight to advocate support for this project based upon a couple of different viewpoints. First, and I think the Chair alluded to it, is that in terms of land use, this particular project, I think we all know, is within the CMD district, and if this type of project gets shut down, what it does is opens up the door for industrial use of this parcel. You could have a user here that's much more noxious in terms of sound, noxious in terms of traffic, noxious in terms of activity than what is being offered here by the proponent of the project itself. Second, we also know that the City of Fall River, as well as the State of Massachusetts, is experiencing, very, experiencing a shortage of housing. This project not only introduces new housing to the City of Fall River, it provides for opportunity for Fall River residents and people from outside of the city to take advantage of newly constructed units in a location that's, you know, become much more attractive over the years, but it also represents new tax growth for the city in terms of providing new revenue for streets, sidewalks, and other things. And then thirdly, I think we, you know, I've spoken on behalf and in favor of all the other projects that abut this. I was here when Curtain Lofts was coming before the Board. I was here when Flint Mills came before the Board to help advocate for the passage of those projects so that those particular mill buildings could be used for elderly residential uses and provide new life into that neighborhood, because we all know, it's a few short years ago, it was a ghost town down there. We had abandoned buildings, we had a bunch of bad activities taking place, and by virtue of these buildings being reutilized, now it's a much more safe neighborhood, and I don't see this as being detrimental to the surrounding buildings themselves. I would much rather have residential growth here than have manufacturing growth, which could be much more problematic and inconsistent with the two mills that we've recently been approved for residential use and are fully occupied at this point. So I'm hoping that the Board would vote to approve this. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone wish to speak against? Sir, please state your name and address.
My name is Caesar on 367 Frost Street, and happens also to be the president, still the president, of the Flint Neighborhood Association. I do have a couple of questions, not that actually going to make any difference with the decision of the Boards, because I really don't believe that nobody, that this chamber can change a vote. My first question is, and before I forget, picking up what my friend Ken just mentioned about industrial, I kind of agreed with him. If the industry or whatever, the business is going to move there, it's going to work overnight. That will be terrible for that neighborhood. But if a business go there to work 9 to 5, 9 to 6, I don't think that's going to be that a bigger problem. Moving people there with families, yes. They on their property, they pay their rent. They want to be outside until 11 o'clock at night, listen to music, doing a barbecue, that's their life. They paying rent for it. And it's not that the residents around there that actually go to bed at 9 o'clock, because they all go, can do about, if that's the case. So one of my questions is this, because it's already a big fight there for parking spaces. If you know, right there, right where it says J27 4, that's the senior center. That small space you have there is the steps that actually go into where the cars are going to come by, okay? Just during the day, when the seniors go to use the facility there, it's a big problem with softs to remove cars from the seniors, because it's no parking for the seniors to park the car. So I see that an issue, because according to them, what I hear from them is, if this goes forward, they're going to fence in their property. They're going to total fence it all in. So I imagine this, people have families and have a right to go visit their families there. Where they going to park? That's a big issue. It's going to be a birthday. Somebody wants to do a birthday party there for a kid on their backyard. Where these people going to park? I don't think they're going to park all the way on the other street and walk there. So that's a big, that's a big issue when we have, when we have this many properties putting together like that. And if we look at that, where's the green space? Where that people going to walk their paths? Where they going to work? I know they walk the bike path, it's right on the back, but on their backyard, they don't have nothing. They don't have no space there. That's one of the problems I have. Another problem we have, and everybody knows that when we have a little bit of rain, we have a big water issue right outside the soft mills, residents there. I mean, sometimes they have to close the roads. So is any study done about connecting all this development into that source system, into that water drains? And that's going to probably, it's a good question for Ken. Is any study done how that's going to impact?
Do you want to answer, Mr. Chairman?
Through the chair.
So as I stated a few minutes ago, this project has gone through site plan review, so those types of things, drainage, utilities, sewer, and water, have all been looked at and have all been approved. Stormwater runoff from this site does not run up to Alden Street, or does not run into the parking lot of either of the mills. It ultimately runs into the Quikashan River. So the only time you would see an issue is if the Quikashan River overtopped its banks, and a project of this size, where we've had to put underground infiltration chambers and all different types of drainage components that you didn't see in past development, all those things address a concern like what you just raised. So in response to not only that question that you asked, you had brought up the issue about parking. And again, as I had stated previously, the two abutting land uses, when they came in and sought their permits, they requested a reduction in permitting, knowing full well that their parking at a rate of one to one, so one space per unit, was not sufficient. But they didn't have the land to build anymore. So they chose for that relief, they chose to create their own headaches. This site is not asking for that relief with reduction to parking. Zoning requires two spaces per dwelling unit. Could be 10 bedrooms in the unit. You still only need two parking spaces. So they've not only met that requirement, they've exceeded it by an additional three parking spaces. So no one in this development, by zoning, and that's what this Board looks at, should ever have the need or want to park in other, any other location. They don't have the right to do that. They can only park within the limits of this development.
Well, like I said, I mean, I see, I see a lot of problems in the future, but like we say, we just go one problem at a time, and when they happen, we try to resolve the problem. We never prevent the problem to happen. We always try to resolve the problem after the problem's resolved, of course. And they're right, the land that's there, empty, is sitting empty for a long time, definitely needs some development there. I was hoping something probably more friendly to the kind of people that live on that area, but that is what it is, and one man cannot, you know, win the war by himself. So I've been being kind enough, as you know, I've been paying buses to bring people here, it's been tabled, so this time, I decided not to. So that's why they're not here. But, you know, I don't know what was going to happen, if it was going to be tabled again, and a bus, it's not cheap, but the association is being paid for the transportation for those elderly people to come to the meeting. With that being said, thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your input. And again, with the zoning Board, planning has done what they've needed to do with this and approved it. Conservation has looked at it and approved it, and what we are left with is, are we going to give them a variance because of the odd frontage situation, a lack of frontage except for a private right-of-easement and the special permit that's required? Anyone else to speak against? Sir?
Joseph Carvalho, Vice President of the Flint Neighborhood Association. Just as a follow-up, so 32 parking places is that minimum, 64 more cars. Have I got that right? No, I don't. 16 townhouses is 32 cars, at the very minimum, each day, not counting, as Carlos had pointed out, other people coming in, going out, even if they're just driving in not to park there, they're driving in to pick people up or otherwise. We've got elderly in Curtain Lofts and elderly in the knitting mills. If we could, we could have all of the, almost every resident at those two locations come here and speak out against this project. The fact that it backs up to the Alfred J. Lima Quikashan River Rail Trail is also another issue for me. You know, your point, city engineer, about runoff and this, that, and the other thing. So 32 cars, and where they're parked, leaking oil, gas, radiator fluid, whatever, antifreeze-
And again, Mr. Carvalho, I have to point out, that is not in the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
It goes into the, into the river. And the flooding, for sure. And I know the Conservation Commission, listen, I've lived in this city long enough to realize a lot of things, one of which is, some of the concerns that people have really don't matter that much to, and not that it's, and not, I don't say that as against any Board, but the realization is that oftentimes, the majority of people are not listened to, and their concerns are not adhered to. And I know that the zoning laws and the regulations of the city are such, you know, Mr. Fiola would have 9,000 market-rate housing units going up in this city. I'm actually concerned about what's up at Heights. We don't even know what happened there, but nonetheless. So I just want to speak in opposition to the project.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Sure.
Mr. Carvalho, I think that your comments about people not being concerned, about people not being listened to are a bit unfair, because we can listen to comments, we can be sympathetic to your concerns. On the other hand, as the Chairman has pointed out several times, we're constrained by zoning laws.
That's what I said.
Okay. If, if it meets the zoning requirements, that's within the purview of this Board. We can be sympathetic to the opposition, but we must go by within the purview of this Board, which is zoning regulations, and as the engineer has pointed out, it meets all requirements.
Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking against? Sir?
Robert Powell, 105 Pittman Street. I have a sister-in-law that lives in Curtain Law, and I know a lot of elderly walk around there. Your point, you're the zoning Board, but they're here for a special permit, which you're going to grant. So they don't meet all the requirements if they need a special permit. That's, that's my point. And it's a big safety concern in that neighborhood. And it's a big safety concern in that neighborhood. Yeah, Fernando's?
Again, stop. We will decide if they've met the requirements.
Well, I see special permits, so evidently it's not zoning law.
So, there are many things, no, there were two things here, a special permit, the presentation being given by Attorney Salino tonight points out how they meet the requirements of the special permit. We as a board ask questions on that and decide if indeed they've met those, those requirements for a special permit. If you needed to do certain things at your property, your home, you may need a special permit, you may need a variance, and you'd be in front of this board. And you or your attorney or your engineer would put forth a proposal saying, hey, we meet these requirements by this, this, and this, which has been done here in this, in this particular case, both in the plans that have been stamped by an engineer and by the presentation given by, by legal counsel. So I'm not battling with you, but it's not, we're not saying anything's, just because they need a special permit doesn't mean anything is wrong, it just means that it's, it's something that's controlled by the bylaws of the City of Fall River.
And there's also a park back there, am I right?
There's the bike path back there.
The Rosso's Park?
Yes.
Yes, I just see, I see this somewhere that something bad's gonna happen when this is all done. I just strictly against it, it's just, a big safety concern in that, in that block, big safety. And I don't know, that's not your purview, I understand, but whoever's responsible for safety should jump on this.
I think what's important for people to understand is that when you look at the zoning bylaw, there is a litany of uses that are allowed in this district without coming before this board, without any control. And as Mr. Fiola stated, many of them would be considered noxious inside of this new residential neighborhood. It's been, this neighborhood has been created through permits granted by this board to allow these mills to be reconstructed into apartments. They require special permits or variances to do so. So the fact that this is a commercial mill district, and the uses that are just as a matter of right allowed, this neighborhood has changed. This is not a commercial, an area that gives off a complexion of commercial historic mill development and uses. So, the, what's happened around us has now made that commercial use almost negligent. I mean, how could you put some type of manufacturing or any, any of the uses that are allowed in the middle of this? How much of an inference and inconvenience would that be to this neighborhood?
I totally agree with you about that part.
So this is, and through the special permit process, what you have to propose is that it is not substantially more detrimental than one of the allowed uses. So I think clearly, you can understand, this is probably the lesser of all of the evils of what could happen here, other than someone buying it and making it a park, which anyone had the opportunity to do when this property went up for sale a number of years ago. That, that's not what happened.
Understood. I understand you're looking at one possible, I'm just looking at the whole picture.
We're looking at the entire neighborhood and trying to create a project that fits into the neighborhood the best that we possibly can. We can't build another granite mill that's six stories high.
Oh, I understand that.
So, that would be what would fit in the best, but that won't happen.
I understand the whole purview with that park and them kids running around this summer, it's just gonna be a mess. And I can see an accident happens, that's all I wanted to say.
And I do believe the abutting, although they are age restricted, they're fifty-five and old.
Yes.
So we're not talking, I'm fifty-four, I don't consider myself elderly, so next year I could go move into one of these apartments.
True.
And I have, but I have children, and I have nieces and nephews and hopefully grandchildren, so you're still gonna have that activity. So I think to, to illustrate this as elderly housing is inappropriate, that's not what this is.
I didn't ask for that.
No, no, but it was mentioned that this is elderly housing.
Sixteen is too many, that's gonna congest anything, I mean, you guys know parking on Alden Street, I don't have to get this.
It will be more congested, but the applicant has met the requirements to deal with that congestion, and that's what this board looks at.
Yes.
Anyone else to speak in opposition?
I have a question.
Yes.
Which are we looking at? The variance or a special permit?
Yes, both.
Both.
We need both for a single variance?
Yes. No, you need both to approve the proposed project. The variance request relates to the lack of frontage on a public way. A special permit relates to the use in a CMD district.
So obviously, we'll take this up with it. Anyone else in opposition?
One, one, one more question.
Yes.
If you may. This board gave a permit, right? So, the person has a permit now to build one building with thirty-two units, right?
It expired.
The variance that...
Both, I believe both variances have expired.
Expired, yes.
Both of them have it?
Yes.
That was my question.
Yep. Anyone else?
Hello, Alexander Silva, member of the Preservation Society of Fall River's Board of Directors, two sixty-three Pine Street, members of the zoning board of appeals. The Preservation Society of Fall River respectfully asks that the zoning board deny the variance and special permit request for the sixteen townhouse units proposed in the historic commercial mill district on Alden Street. The townhouses proposed for the location would not be consistent with the neighborhood, which mirrors the National Register of Historic Places designated Quikashan Valley Mills Historic District on the opposite bank of the river. This neighborhood, primarily made of granite mills and tenement housing, is a unified pocket of Fall River history that deserves to be protected from variations of city ordinance that don't work to protect it. While many of the historic mills in the Quikashan Valley Mills Historic District are now gone, many of the mills on Alden Street have already been redeveloped or in the process of being redeveloped into a variety of housing stock, as mentioned clearly here tonight. With more frontage on the Quikashan River Rail Trail than any accepted city street, these out-of-place townhouses encroaching on the community's history and recreation would be a detriment to efforts to redevelop the area in a respectful manner and to Fall River as a whole. Please uphold Fall River's ordinances with respect to this proposal and follow the guidance of the Fall River Master Plan and downtown and waterfront urban renewal plans, which call for development in historic areas to be congruent with the neighborhoods around them. Sincerely, the Preservation Society Board of Directors.
Thank you. Anyone else against? That being the case, I turn back to the board, I would suggest, first of all, is there any other questions, any other discussion, many members of the board are all to this? I would suggest that we take up the matter of the variance first. Basically, gentlemen, has the case been made that because of soil topography, lot shape, has the argument been made that there is a hardship here, and has the, has that argument been adequately made at this point? Anybody care to move on that, on that variance?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any stipulations on the variance?
My only thing was, I said it was gonna be two bedrooms, I didn't know.
Not part of the variance, that'd be a special permit. Second, please?
Second.
A motion and a second and discussion on the motion to approve the variance. Hearing none. Member John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Prory, yes. On the matter of the special permit, we would ask for a determination or motion that the use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So we'll bifurcate that.
I'll make the motion that is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? That being the case, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Prory, yes. And then the final would be the approval of the special permit, and that's when we can condition. Do we then have an approval on the special permit as presented for sixteen units? Pardon?
I'll make a motion to approve.
No more than two bedrooms. So if you decide to knock it down to one bedroom, you wouldn't have any opposition to that. So as drawn, so that includes the parking spaces, thirty-two hundred liters three extra, so we have thirty-five parking spaces on the site. So, that being the case, any other amendments before we, any other reductions before we second it? Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good, motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Prory, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Thanks.
Glad you said it, not me.
Is it okay if I stay?
Absolutely, you do not have to get up and come back again. I wouldn't do that to you. All right, very good. I don't know, but zero-two in old business, John L. Gaveo and Hannah M. Gaveo, KRO Attorney Peter A. Salino, six fifty-two Wood Street, map D eleven, lot forty-two. The applicant seeks a variance to divide the existing parcel into two lots, waiving dimensional requirements in the S. Single Family zoning district. Proposed lot one will require relief from lot coverage and side yard setbacks, whereas proposed lot two will require relief, 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 okay, relief from frontage, lot area, lot coverage, and side yard setbacks. Attorney Salino.
Good evening. For the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of the petitioners, Mr. and Mrs. Galveo. As a brief recap, we were before the board at the February meeting on this petition. To summarize, the petition was to divide the existing land located at six fifty-two Wood Street in Fall River, leaving the existing dwelling on what is shown as lot one, and creating a new lot labeled as lot two. Lot one would have been seeking a waiver relative to the lot coverage and the setback to the east. The setback's supposed to be fifteen feet in this district, it's thirteen. And lot two was seeking waivers relative to frontage, setback, area, and lot coverage. And we concluded last month's meeting with board, the board seeking comment from my client relative to what type of house he would need, and to depict it on the plan. So the plan has been revised to show a proposed single-family dwelling with two off-street parking spaces. As you can see, it's thirty-seven by forty-eight. The easterly setback on the side yard on the new drawing now becomes conforming at fifteen, it was not last time where we were before you. So that would leave us with asking the board, as it relates to lot two, for waivers on frontage, the westerly side yard setback, and lot coverage. So I'm happy to entertain any further questions, but I think we've answered the request of the board to depict a home that would be suitable to my client's interest.
And that depiction shows a much smaller unit than was on the...
That is correct, we've tried to...
The lot coverage, it drops drastically.
It did, and, you know, tried to be responsive to the request, certainly.
Okay, questions from the board? Any other questions? And thank you very much, and thanks, thank you to your, to your applicant as well, your client, for that, kind of more realistically sized dwelling on the parcel, so thank you again.
No problem.
Questions?
Is there a particular reason why it's not centered?
I think because we were trying to get to a setback that was palatable all around, and if you take another ten feet off the house on the left side, which would be the west side, the house becomes almost too small. So, we could center it, but then you'd, you'd need two side, two side setback waivers.
I'm just saying, you could do ten feet on either side, correct? And then, am I missing something?
Could I address that?
Yeah.
For the record, Jeff Tholm, Northeast Engineers, we felt it best to comply with the setback to the perimeter sideline, to the abutters, as opposed to the interior sideline, which is the applicant's or petitioner's property. So therefore, we're gonna...
Today?
Today. Today, well, once it gets built, then it's there. So then whoever comes in the future knows what they're dealing with. But it's just, why, why put in a butter out and not maintain a setback that's required in the zone if we can meet it? If we, you know, like, why burden in a butter if all we have to burden is the applicant? So that's why we felt it best, and like Peter said, why ask for a relief on two sides when we only need it on one?
Is there any thought to splitting the difference if you added the five and the thirteen, and give them each eight, and move that lot line over? Is that, is there some magic to that number thirteen? Or could you make the house smaller and make that five or ten? I don't know. I mean, that's, it might be something that might be more palatable.
I'd be happy to...
I don't know what the thirteen answer is.
I don't know the thirteen answer either, Jeff, do you know the thirteen answer? I'll answer the house, please.
Well, the, yeah, fifty-eight feet, where that comes from is, maybe put me out of sight. It implies, I wanna say the fifty-eight feet comes from the frontage that was already on the land plot lots as they exist currently, even though that frontage is on Perry Street, not on Wood Street. So when maintaining that fifty-eight feet, we're just transferring it over to Wood Street. We can certainly, I mean, that lot line is subject to change. If the board feels it best to shift that over, to split the difference, and make that, you know, nine and nine with that eighteen feet, by all means. It would make lot two a little bit bigger, it'd make lot one a little smaller, it won't impact the project. I mean, I'm, myself, I'm looking down the road, and I get nervous when I see five feet. Somebody's gonna come in someday, own one of these two properties, somebody that's not involved at this point in time, they're gonna put an eight-foot stockade fence between the two properties, and, you know, we're gonna have a border war back there, or, God forbid, something happens, you can't even really get back there to deal with fire, you can't get back there to deal with any number of different things. I just find it cramped, and if we have the opportunity to not completely cramp it, I'm looking at the distance to the lot next door, you know, and quite honestly, their setback from the sideline facing this, this new proposed dwelling is substantial. So, you know, if it's five feet, maybe they're here to speak against it tonight, I don't know, we haven't gotten that far yet. But, you know, I think the ten and ten, the ten and ten is a little bit more palatable to me, I don't know how the other board members feel. You know, do we wanna move the lot line?
It just seems to be the most reasonable, I mean, ten and ten, you center the house, and now you don't have to move any lines or do anything else.
The only thing I would say to that, if you're gonna go ten and ten, you might as well hold the fifteen to the perimeter lot line and go nine and nine on the interior lot lines, like shift that over. I mean, what's the difference between nine and ten? So it's, it's just a matter of making lot two a little bit bigger, making lot one a little bit smaller. Lot one is still gonna be conforming area-wise at that point. Lot two just gets a little bit bigger, and I think it satisfies the board's concern.
Joe, I just have one question.
Yeah, please.
Is it gonna be a two-story house or one-story house?
Two-story.
No, but I mean two stories.
Two-story, and it's not sideways.
The house is like thirty-five hundred fifty-two square feet, so that's gonna be a big house. I think that's what they might be alluding to, if you could shrink the square footage of the house.
Okay.
Because if it's two stories, that's, like I said, thirty, thirty-five hundred square feet is a big house.
Might have a garage, depending on the first floor.
There's a couple of different alternatives that we've reviewed that are out there, so basically, this footprint that you're looking at at the plan tonight incorporates all of those. Ultimately, the house is not gonna be that size, it's gonna be something a little bit smaller that's gonna fit into that footprint, depending on which way they decide to go with it. But, in order to give the board something to look at, you know, we felt it best to hold, you know, the maximum width that we were looking at and the maximum depth. And the other thing I would note too is the, the lot coverage requirement on the initial plan, we were requesting fifty, that fifty was a ballpark figure. We had a building envelope shown on the plan at that point, not necessarily a building footprint. Now we're showing a building footprint which limits or restricts the lot coverage request down to thirty-five percent. So we're cutting out fifteen percent on that request.
Yeah, you, thirty, you went from twenty-five...
We went from fifty to thirty-five.
Fifty, you've got thirty on the plan.
Thirty on lot one.
You're correct, yep.
But then again, if we shift that lot line, that number could change, might get a little bit smaller, I mean, might get a little bit bigger, I should say. A lot one, get a little bit smaller on two. I don't know, I don't wanna sit here and redesign the whole thing, but I've expressed my concern on it, and it's, it's that five foot to the other lot line, and it's not today...
And it's not today, because it's, you know, if it gets built, it's probably gonna be two family members in, you know, in the two parcels, but that's not forever.
Mr. Chair, if I could address that. So I have the authority to shrink the house by 5 feet in order to make it 10 on that interior lot line. So if that needs to happen, we can certainly do that. As Mr. Tolman alluded to, we looked at with our client, I think, three or four different houses, and obviously conceptual, trying to get something on the plan. But we can certainly meet that if that's a requirement of the board.
Yep. You know, and, you know...
And then that would leave us with 10 and 10. Oh, no, 10 and 15, actually. If we take 5 feet off the house, then you'd have 10 on the... Chris?
Anybody in the audience?
Whatever.
Anybody in the audience?
Yeah, anybody else want to throw a design idea? It has to be a gingerbread Victorian, no, all joking aside. Okay, any other questions from the board at this point? Anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Ken, you want to jump in?
No, I quit.
No, okay. Anyone to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, they're hearing none. Then we have a decision to make. We have a number of variances that are required in order to develop this lot. We've had an offer to change dimensions. We've had discussion on dimensions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance with any changes to the plans that anyone wishes to discuss at this point. You know, it's a tough one. Nobody wants to take this one on.
Mr. Chairman, given that counsel has the authority, as you say, to shrink it 5 feet, it'd be acceptable?
Yes.
So I would make the motion to approve with that 5-foot shrinkage.
So 10-foot side yard on the westerly property boundary? Shrinking the house 5 feet.
Yes.
32 by 48 now?
That would be the math, yes, yes.
That would be my motion.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that? And/or any additional amendments we wish to make to that motion? Love you guys. I love you guys. They're hearing none. On the motion?
Yes.
John Frank, yes. I'm okay. Jim Colkins? Dan DePere?
Done.
Okay. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perri, yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number one. Y&amp;M Home Solutions LLC, 109 George Street and 297 Lindsay Street, map 8-14, lot 6. The applicant seeks a special permit to reestablish the use of 109 George Street, formerly Camaro's Bakery, as a bakery per 86-428B of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance, a property located in a G. General Residence zoning district. For the record.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, here on behalf of Y&amp;M Home Solutions, applicant for this petition. Quite simply, what we're looking to do here is to, as you had mentioned, reestablish the use of 109 George Street as a bakery. The building is located in the General Residence G. District, so therefore is non-conforming. However, the building had operated for 38-plus years as a bakery from around 1980 up until, I believe it was 2018, when the doors were closed on the bakery. And it's my understanding that the reason the bakery was closed was not, was simply because the owners of the bakery who owned the whole property just wished to retire. They didn't want anybody else in there occupying it. They just wanted to live on the property without the hassle of having to operate the bakery. In 2021, the property was sold to the current owners, who have maintained the property since then. And simply what they're looking to do is reestablish the use that was there under section 86-428B. Since it's been over the two years, they want to buy special permit, reestablish the use as a bakery of this facility. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, no change in the footprint of the building, obviously.
Nope.
All right. What is the board's questions?
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation? Hours of operation? Yeah. 8 to 7.
Is that one day?
One day?
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week? Any other questions?
I would, I would just, if we could possibly change that, maybe make it a little bit earlier as well, because just as a bakery use, you know, it might be something where they might want to operate a little bit earlier than that. There is, there is a tenant that I believe that is, the petitioner has lined up for this facility, but I'm not sure that the petitioners may be aware of what their requirements are. So we can go like 7 to 7, as opposed to 8 to 7?
It goes probably 3:00 in the morning, and it's all about 7.
Yeah, well...
The bakery operation for retail?
For retail.
Can be established from 7 to 7.
Right.
You know, the actual baking, you know, with the doors closed, I don't think...
Yeah, I mean, correct, correct.
Yeah, the shop open hours.
Yes.
Yes.
7 to 7 is a...
7 to 7, 7 days a week.
That's fine.
7, 7, 7.
7, 7, 7.
The car will...
We gotta go right now.
Stars are aligned.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Somebody gonna ask if it's Italia, or can we get Mathes?
All right, no other questions? I want to entertain any motion? No. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you asked.
We're absolutely right.
I thought you did ask him, sorry.
Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Ken?
I'll make a motion to grant, first state, first step, that it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm. Do we have a second on that?
Absolutely.
Discussion. Then on the vote, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins? Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perri, yes?
And I will make the next motion to grant with hours of operation, 7 to 7, 7 days a week.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins? Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Perri, yes. Congratulations. We have a bank.
Thank you.
All right, item number two. Is this MD Masabrano?
Correct.
Okay. 159 165 Hunter Street, map 1-07, lot 65. The applicant seeks a special permit per 86-423B of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance to divide the subject property into two lots, leaving the existing three-family dwelling, 159 Hunter Street on Lot 1, a new 2,655-square-foot parcel of land with 28.65 feet of frontage on Hunter Street, and the other existing three-family dwelling, 165 Hunter Street on Lot 2, a new 3,300-square-foot parcel of land with 163 feet of frontage on Hunter Street. The property is zoned in an A2 apartment zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Tolman, Northeast Engineers and Consultants. This particular application, what we're looking for is your standard division of land under section 86-43B. We have two dwelling units that have been on the same property prior to 1954. According to the assessor's records, these structures were built around 1900. So therefore, what we're looking for is to divide them into as equal, as equivalent as lots as we possibly can. As you can see, we do have a zone line that cuts through the middle of the property, the front portion of the property being in the local business district, and the rear portion of the property being in the apartment 2 district. But as you are aware, under 86-43B, the zone itself is somewhat relative when it comes to the division of land with two dwellings on it in this case. So quite simply, what we're looking to do is divide this in the most reasonable manner. So what we've done is incorporated the existing asphalt driveway onto Lot 2, just to give that the frontage, some frontage to kind of balance that off. There's really only room for one parking spot. The way the driveway is constructed now, it only goes back so far, and then beyond that, there's a lawn area. There's no, as far as I know, there's no off-street parking permitted by the owner at this time. I've been by there on several occasions. I have not seen a car parked on the property. So, you know, this, this division may incorporate, may trigger some off-street parking for the rear dwelling upon sale. Or I don't know what the intent of the properties is after the division, but simply what we're looking to do is just divide the property under 86-423B. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
And you, first question is, you base this basically on a square footage basis to try to balance these two off?
Yeah, frontage, square footage. Square footage is always a big thing. Frontage can be a challenge on these things. A lot of times, it's one house behind the other, so you try to do the best you can with that, and you try to incorporate, you know, what's, what's happening out along the frontage. In this particular case, the driveway is kind of tapered to the north a little bit, so we did kick that lot line over to make it a little bit wider than typically would be in a case like this, just to incorporate the entire driveway rather than have it being split on the two properties.
Okay, then along the edge of that, we have, we have the easement, the 40-square-foot proposed easement, and I take it that is...
Yes.
That's Lot 2's property, and that is an easement to Lot 1?
To Lot 1, for, correct. pedestrian use and pedestrian access to the rear of the building and to the porch on the side, and, correct. Just to maintain the existing use of that sidewalk, I mean, walkway, which is used by both dwellings at this time.
So it's non-exclusive?
Correct.
Questions? It's crowded. Anything from engineering standpoint?
The only, the only issue I see with it is, you could potentially mimic the 4-foot easement on the rear lot line to give Lot 2 the ability to get by their front porch along the front of their house. I don't think you need to change the lot line, but you might be able to... It doesn't have to be a 4-foot easement, but 4-foot off of the porch to give that same accommodation that you're giving to the front building. But other than that, no, it's, the plan's fine.
Yeah, because we're right up against that, and I would, I would have a concern with a fence here as well. I mean, if it's gonna stay...
So normally, you always, normally in these conditions, put in no fences, separate utilities.
Any other questions, comments? All right, in that case, I would accept, but no, I will not. Anybody in, anybody in the audience here to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone to speak against? They're hearing none. The board, what's your vote?
I like a motion to approve with the condition of separate utilities and no interior fences.
Do you want to include the easement from the porch, the 4-foot easement, to get around the back house?
Yeah, you can do that, too. I said there's no fences, but, yeah, it's always safe.
Saves a border war at some future date.
Would help with me, then it's still, if you have that.
Yeah, it might be nice if you actually scrape your porch and paint it someday. All right, so the motion to approve with, as usual, no interior fences, separation of utilities, and a 4-foot easement for Lot 1.
Benefit of...
Lot 2.
Yeah.
The benefit of Lot 2. Across the back of Lot 1. We have a second? We have a second by Jim Colkins. Any further discussion? They're hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perri, yes?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Hang on, case in point. We did not talk about detriment to the neighborhood?
You don't have to, I mean...
We don't have to, because it's...
Specific section.
Well, things are being passed out.
Attorney Salino, before we begin, are you submitting this, that this will be representative of what gets built?
That's what the architect provided us.
So it's part of...
Part of the record.
Part of the decision will be that this gets built?
Just because an architect draws, it doesn't mean an engineer can design it.
Well, it's not the scale, and there's no dimension, so...
Yeah, this could be, this could be this big. HO scale.
It's gonna be prettier than what's out there now.
Item number three, River Trail Condominium LLC, KRO Attorney Peter A. Salino. This is for 644 Rodman Street, map 1-20, lot 7. The applicant seeks a variance to convert the existing 20,000-foot, square-foot warehouse, 644 Rodman Street, into 16 apartment units. The subject property is located in the B1 Local Business Zoning District, which allows for a maximum of three residential units per structure. The applicant also proposes to make minor alterations to the existing non-conforming structure, add entrance, exterior stairways, fire escapes, et cetera. All alterations will conform with the requirements of the BL zoning district. Attorney Salino?
Thank you. For the record, Peter Salino, 550 Locust Street, on behalf of the applicant, River Trail Condominium.
Jeff Tolman, Northeast Engineers and Consultants.
The petition before the board seeks a variance to use the existing non-conforming structure located at 644 Rodman Street, which is a vacant warehouse building that's pretty dilapidated, and turn it into 16 townhouse units within the existing structure. The proposal is that there would be eight units on the first floor, eight units on the second floor, as depicted by the rendering here. The idea is townhouse style, and the parking is sufficient for two per unit. So ultimately, we're strictly seeking a variance, because as Mr. Chair read into the record, only three units are allowed by right in the BL or HD3 district. And again, the proposal is for 16 units. It should also probably be noted that this has previously been before the board, this site has previously been before the board, and the relief that was granted has lapsed for inaction.
We're big tonight on repeats.
Yes, it seems like there are a lot of repeats. There was this thing called COVID.
This thing called...
Yeah.
All right, any questions from the board?
All two bedroom units?
Go ahead.
I believe so.
Yeah, the floor plan shows all two bedrooms.
Yes.
Our, is this being, is this building actually being converted, or is it basically knocked down to the foundation?
No.
Okay.
It's being converted.
Okay.
The bones of this building are remarkable. If you were to go inside and take a tour of this building and look at it, it's the woodwork and the craftsmanship on everything on the inside is remarkable. So they want to maintain that.
Okay.
The only thing I think they would add is, because this property as a whole, there's this building, there's another 10,000-square-foot warehouse on the corner of Rodman and Lawrence, and then there's some vacant land in the back. It has been subdivided by A and R plan. There is, it is on the market for sale, and there's... They have had some discussions with a potential buyer that might be looking at the additional 10,000, I mean, the 10,000-square-foot building on the corner and the vacant land on the back. But they would like connectivity between the two properties. So if you go, if you scroll back to the initial plan here, that, the access, the second means of egress that we're showing here out to Lawrence Street, potentially could be eliminated. Wouldn't impact the, us being able to meet the requirements of access to the parking areas that we're showing here, but it would eliminate that access so that Lot 2 could be connected to Lot 3.
We should all three lines together.
Somewhere.
So with the entrance to the parking lot on Rodman, thirty-one feet.
For anybody to buy all at once.
At least is allowing even two, three quarters of pickup trucks to pass each other if they're coming and going, so.
Yeah.
Mark your units, mark your grade?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comment from planning, engineering?
We just got the building plans today. The only, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that you meet the requirement for the two points of egress. I know there's a walkout patio and a door, but they're very close to each other. So I don't, I mean, it's not a zoning issue, but.
Certainly the intent is to comply with that.
Yeah, you would have, but the best thing I would question is, especially on the second floor, you do have that patio, the patio door to get out to the balcony, but we'll leave that up for the building inspector for code enforcement. Worst-case scenario is you're going to put a slider out the back somehow, but that's where the bedrooms are. But that could still count as egress if you put a slider out and a window out the back and another sidewalk or something. No, other than that, I think it's a good use of the property and laid out well. That's improvement. Something that counsel didn't offer, but if you actually do a calculation based on the BL and the fifteen hundred square foot per unit, I think when you look at the aggregate of this parcel, which is thirty-eight thousand square feet, I think you can make an argument that you exceed what the, what the lot unit count would be per square foot on this building. So if you look at five thousand square feet and then keep adding fifteen hundreds, I think, I think if you do a calculation for sixteen, and my math is poor, even being an engineer without a calculator, but I think you'd be, I think you'd be pretty close.
Good point, thank you.
And this is also, I believe, located in the housing development overlay district, which promotes this type of development on these type of buildings, so.
Yeah, you don't want to go down that road if you don't have to, so.
No.
Just to make everybody.
That's a hook.
Any, yeah. Ken's going, I was just going to say that. Any other questions at this point? None. Anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of the petition? Ken Fiala?
Executive Vice President of Bristol County Economic and Insurance. I'm here tonight to advocate for the approval of this proposal before the zoning board of appeals. As was depicted in the previous renderings that were up on the state, on the screen here, you can see the current status of the building and what it looks like today. One could certainly argue that the site is blighted, and now with the, with the new proposal that's going to be taking place there, you can see the marked difference that's that's going to occur as a result of this proposed development. I think the intriguing part of this particular parcel in this project itself is that this also acts as the entrance into Cortes End of the River Trail. So you're dressing up this portion of Rodman Street for people that are coming into the trail, and they have a much more, you know, aesthetic entrance as they traverse by this parcel into the trail itself. And then, as was alluded earlier, as part of my last comments, I'm not trying to create nine thousand market rate units in the city, but I am trying to advocate for market rate units in the city, and that is conditioned by the fact, the fact that market rate units, there's a demand for market rate units. We're not displacing people when we're creating these market rate units. These are new units and people now have an opportunity to make a choice as to the types of living environments that they want. And it also provides choices to people as they look to either locate or stay within the city itself. So again, I think just based upon the visuals here, this is, this makes a good project for that area. This census tract is a challenging census tract in terms of poverty, and this type of private investment there, I think, goes a long way to help stabilize that. The census tract, and lastly, as was also indicated, the actual bones of the building, even though the exterior doesn't look very nice, the bones of the building are very strong in terms of hybrid floors, being wooden beams and everything else that'd be incorporated and utilized in the overall design. So it's a repurposing of a property that's been here for close to probably a hundred years at least, I would think, so I hope that the board will see fit to approve this.
Good, thank you very much, Ken.
One other thing as a planning aspect is, and Ken often comes and speaks in favor of a lot of these, take into consideration that it's not all in one location of the city. So the need for housing dispersed throughout the community, there is a need. So this isn't just all on the waterfront or not all downtown around this building. This is an area where just down the end of Lawrence Street, near the Lewiston Street DCM facility that used to be the incinerator, they're currently being permitted, I think, six duplexes, triplexes, sorry, at that end of that street. So again, the the nature of this area being zoned BL, that that's what it's there for. So to see this type of development in in this neighborhood would be a, you know, a catalyst for a lot more to happen. If you remember directly across the street where Global Glass was taken down, that was also permitted for duplex condominiums. That developer didn't have the ability or was in fear of pulling the trigger on it. Once something like this happens, then you start to see the infill of all these other projects come to fruition, so hopefully the developer will take this and run with it this time.
Yeah, and and something that, if not exactly the rendering, something along these lines, very attractive, very sleek, not going to, not going to be oddly out of style like a nineteen sixties building in thirty years from now. Anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, they're hearing none. To the members of the board, what do we wish to do?
Make a motion to grant?
Second.
Conditions?
Two bedroom units. Sixteen total, eight, eight and eight, with the parking as stated on the plan. This is a concept, so I don't want to say that.
No, we can't.
It doesn't look like that.
When you say parking as stated on the plan, with requirement of two parking spots per unit, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. I just want to make you aware that the, that overall layout is subject to minor change. Now, I don't anticipate any major changes, but because of the potential sale of the other two lots, there's a slight variation that could happen.
Yeah, so the other, the other strip is strictly.
You weren't asking for parking.
No, we're not asking for any relief in that regard.
So it's got to be two units per.
Yeah, we have to meet that requirement.
Site plan will. Yep, site plan can.
That's my motion.
Can do their thing, and.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Carrera? Yes. Nice work. Item number four, Rui Tavarez, care of Attorney Peter Isolino, for five oh eight Smith Street, map F fifteen, lot twenty-three. The applicant seeks a special permit to demolish the existing detached garage and reconstruct a two-car garage attached, as well as add, in addition to the residence, the applicant seeks permission to exceed the maximum thirty percent lot coverage allowed in our four-two-family zoning district.
Thank you for the record, Peter Solino, five fifty Locust Street. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Tavarez, can you state your name?
My name is Rui Tavarez.
Mr. Tavarez is the owner of the property located at five oh eight Smith Street in Fall River. That is the subject of the instant petition. This matter is currently pending before site plan review, and I think that's how this originally came to be, which is to say that the existing pool and the apron surrounding the pool take the house over the lot coverage requirement. Should be noted, there is a permit for the pool that was not built in the cover of night or anything like that. So the proposal is to construct a two-car garage on the, if you're standing in the street on the right side of the house, and in addition, on the left side of the house. There, currently on the site, as is depicted on the plans, there's a detached garage that is only three feet from the property line. So the proposal is to raise that, which in my view and opinion makes the site better, to attach a garage to keep Mr. Tavarez's cars in, connected to his house, and to build an addition on the northeasternally side of the house. I've done this as a special permit because all of the structures that are shown predate his ownership and are non-conforming. For example, the house is only eight point three feet from the street. So I've done this as a special permit, seeking to enlarge the existing nonconformity, and I would submit to you for the following reasons, that what is proposed is not more detrimental for the neighborhood than what is already there. Number one, I think getting rid of that detached garage, which is only three feet from the boundary line, is a good thing. I think that betters the property. I think constructing an attached garage allow him to keep cars inside the property. We're not changing the character of the property from a single family to a multifamily. It's still a single-family dwelling, and Mr. Tavarez is the occupant with his wife and children. So the ultimate site, the changes again are those two additions, and the request is lot coverage. As proposed, we are at fifty-five point two, and the requirement in an R four district, as the board knows, is thirty percent.
But a substantial amount of that is the pool itself, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so the current lot coverage is already fifty-one percent, so it's already non-conforming, so it's really just for four percent. And through site plan review, they've accommodated that increase in lot coverage through the installation of some roof recharge infiltration systems. So this does have site plan approval. One of the conditions was to resolve this zoning issue. That was it.
And from a dimensional standpoint, really the only nonconform, the nonconformity of area, of course, but the existing nonconformity of setback, front setback.
Front setback, and then the additions meet all setback.
Yeah.
The building department determined that the actual construction with setbacks needs no relief. I mean, he can do that through a finding for the expansion of an existing non-conforming single-family house, so this is strictly for lot coverage.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone to speak in favor? Ken left. Anyone to speak against? They're hearing none. I agree with your, I agree with your position of moving this forward as a, as a special permit myself. I don't know what everybody else on the board feels, feels about it, but I think you're right on the money. Therefore, we have a motion to approve, a motion to deny.
We have approval. If I, if he didn't blow down that?
It should be yes, because, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I find that the proposal is not going substantially detrimental to the area.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion? My brain just shut down for a second. No, that's all we need on that. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Joe Carrera? Yes. Do the second one as well? On the special.
But I, I hope that we grant the special permit.
We have a motion, a second discussion. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Carrera? Yes. On the matter of the. You still need the variance.
Does a boat go in the pool?
Goes in the pool. Yeah. Put a boat in the pool. Thank you very much. Item number five, Marte and, is it Vanilla, Vanilia, Camara?
Your wife's name, that's proper.
Care of Attorney Peter Isolino, fifteen dash nineteen Norfolk Street, eight dash sixteen, map eight dash sixteen one twenty-seven. The applicant seeks a variance to take the original mixed-use building and change the commercial space into two residential units, waiving all requirements in the G general zoning district. The applicant also seeks a special permit to waive parking requirements.
Thank you. For purposes of the record, Peter Solino, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Camara is here with me. This is Duarte Camara. He's the owner of the building. The lots themselves, obviously you can see from the plan, are adjoining and they're created by variance, previous variance relief. So what we're here before you on is the fact that we have a mixed-use building, and that building housed the Azores Bakery. And in July of two thousand twenty-two, there was a fire in the Azores Bakery. Mr. Camara has run that bakery for forty years, and he decided as a result of that fire that he was going to retire, and he was not going to use it as a bakery anymore. And so as a consequence of that, the family is left in a position to decide what they're going to do with that space. And so the proposal is to include two apartments in that space in order to make this a four-unit building. So in a G district, a three-unit building is allowed by right. We are asking for a four-unit building, so we need a variance for the use for exceeding the allowable number of apartments. And then secondarily, we do not have off-street parking for eight cars, and so as a consequence, I've sought a special permit for the special, for the off-street parking component of the petition. So I'd submit to the board that A, the hardship on this petition is certainly the fire inside the existing structure and the inability, based on the maxed-out lot coverage and lot lines, to do anything other than that, anything other than a multifamily with this building. Secondarily, on the special permit component of the petition, Mr. Duat ran the bakery twenty-four seven. He would get to the bakery in the middle of the night. He had a box truck. He had employees during the day. He had customers. At holidays like Easter, he'd have a line out the door for sweet bread. So ultimately, I would suggest to the board that what is proposed is actually less detrimental than what has been there for the last forty years, which is an active seven-day-a-week business with customer, employee, and loading parking. When the loading and unloading would occur, if you've been to the, to the street, it's a congested street sometimes, and there'd be double parking, backup beepers. So in my view, the reason why the special permit is appropriate for the parking component of this petition is that there would be less noise. There is currently a thirty-minute parking space designated by the city in front of the bakery, which I would suggest be turned into one of these off-street parking places. And without the employees and the customers, I think we get better in terms of traffic and congestion. So with that, I'll close it certainly. If anybody has any questions for me or Mr. Camara, we're happy to answer them.
One of the questions, when was the fire?
July of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
I think the actual date is in the petition, July twenty-fourth specifically. So the commercial, if you're thinking the commercial use has not lapsed, if that's where you're going with it.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I think it's a very straightforward proposal, and you addressed the parking concerns I might have had, so, yes, very straightforward.
And I was surprised, because when I, when I went by, I actually got a parking space, so it's.
Take away the sweet bread, Mr. Carrera.
Take away the sweet bread, this is playing robes.
That's it.
All right, any other questions? Planning, nothing? Okay, very good. I will then entertain a motion. We have two pieces of this. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I promised to keep these things shorter. Anyone here to speak in favor?
I am.
Ken Fiala, I believe, yes.
Ken Fiala, Executive Vice President, Bristol County Economic and Insurance Consultants. Here tonight to speak on, in favor of the proposal as before the zoning board of appeals. As was, I think, stated by Attorney Solino, I believe, and a lot of people in the neighborhood believe that this is going to be a less intrusive use upon some of the neighboring neighbors and neighboring properties. Mr. Duat actually had a very, very successful business there and was well-energized and hubbub of business activity and social activity and other things. So now converting it into residential use, I think, is going to actually have a more quieter impact upon the neighborhood and certainly a less impact on traffic. But in addition to that, and what's most important, I think, to the overall city aspect of this is that this is in relative close proximity to the new MBTA stuff that's over on the Wall Street, and by virtue of a forum becoming an MBTA community, the city is under an obligation to providing multifamily housing in and around the area of the commuter rail. So the more commercial, the more apartment housing that we can establish within this area, I think, helps the city meet its demand and the number of units that it needs to, to submit to the MBTA for the zoning that the MBTA is looking to impose upon the city and surround. and surround the area. So by virtue of allowing the reconversion of this property into residential use, also helps the city meet that demand in terms of apartments to be associated and located next to the commuter rail terminal. So for those reasons are stated, I'd hope that the board would see fit to approve the petition as presented.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? They're hearing none. I would turn to the board.
Mr. Chairman, relative to the special permit aspect on the parking, I move that the board finds that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the area, and that the special permit may be granted.
Through the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ricky Sahadi, I believe. All right, discussion? Therefore, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perera, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the special permit be granted.
Conditions, Jim?
Not in the parking.
Very good. All right, we have a motion to grant the special permit. Is there a second?
Second.
Would be Dan DePere. Discussion? John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perera, yes.
Variants.
Variants.
The variants? I know, it's here. I don't need to look at the plans for the variants.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, very good. Motion, and second was by Dan DePere. Discussion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Perera, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Your sweet bread was the closest to my mother's. I hate that the baby was gone. Item number six, seventy-seven to seventy-three Weidemo LLC, care of Attorney David Perry, seventy-seven to seventy-three Weidemo Street, MAP S oh eight, lot twenty-two. The applicant seeks a special permit to divide the two existing three-family dwellings into two separate parcels, waiving requirements in the G General Zoning District. Good evening, and thank you for your patience.
Oh, no, thank you very much. My name is David Perry. I am, I'm a new face, so thank you for your welcome. I practice at nine oh one Eastern Avenue. That's the Batelho Law Group. I represent the new owners of this lot, seventy-seven dash seventy-three Weidemo LLC. The lot, it's two three-family buildings. They're, I don't know how old the buildings are. They certainly predate nineteen fifty-four. The new owners are in the process of renovating the structures on the lot. They, they plan to make no changes to the footprint or the, you know, they're going to clean up the exteriors, but they're not going to change the footprint or the structures themselves. And they would like essentially to create a paper change, a change on paper to the lot by dividing the houses up into two separate parcels. The rear house, number seventy-three Weidemo, will get the garage and garage parking. The, the front house, number seventy-seven Weidemo, is going, I guess, have street parking only. There's no lot parking. There should be no detriment whatsoever to the neighborhood, because there's not going to be any change either in, you know, the use or the occupancy of the building. It's really an economic decision to split the parcel up into two parcels. And the economic hardship, of course, is that it's, it's more, it's harder to renovate and sell a lot with two houses on it. It's easier to sell two separate lots, each with a single structure. Thank you very much.
Is there any off-street parking currently?
Yes, there's that garage.
Just the garage?
Yes.
So there's no driveway parking at all?
No, I mean, and there wouldn't be room for it, because, I mean, I, this is, it's currently actually what looks like a driveway on the eastern portion of the lot is actually grassy now, you know, so it's, it's not asphalt, it's grass, but it would allow, you know, entrance to that, to that garage. But there is no plan to create, there's no plan, there's no room really to create parking spaces in front of that rear house.
Not unusual in these circumstances from planning engineering.
No, but just to be consistent, you should discuss the need for easements around the front building, for instance, where you only have an offset of one point six feet to the building.
Mm-hmm.
Where we want to consider the requirement of a four-foot access easement around that portion of the building. Separate utilities across, of course, they don't show where they, they show the waterline comes in the front building. I'm assuming it runs through the front building and then out the back of the front building to the rear building, and that's the purpose of requiring all these utility separations so that that is not the case down the road, so.
Okay, certainly.
Normal conditions.
There's probably a sewer job too as well.
Excuse me?
There's a sewer job at Weidemo as well, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, it'll have to be, they show the sewer lines, but they would have to be separated, all utilities.
Okay. Certainly, I will let the, let the owners know that.
And what you know, you can't, you would not be the conveyor, you know, convey the law until that separation is done and an affidavit.
Has to be the court. You're welcome. Any other questions, comments?
Joe, I just have one question. You said, what was your, the hardship? You said it was financial?
Um, there's no hardship. There's no hardship. I mean, I mean, there's a request on the form for hardship, so.
It's a special.
I'm getting it over my skis and suggesting what it is.
It was filed as a variance.
It was filed as a variance.
Yes. My, my, like I said, I've been practicing at Paul River for, for a year, so forgive me for airing in filing a variance at first.
He was there to tell people.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Perera. I appreciate that. Come and visit when it's all done, I guess, is what I can offer you.
We give the new guy a hard time, so I think it's part of...
Thank you very much for hearing me.
All right, any other questions? Ricky, I think he had one. Then I would entertain a motion at this point to approve, or a motion to deny. Motion to approve with any conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve. To approve. The condition, separate utilities. No interior fences. And, just like the engineer said, easement across the rear of the...
Minimum easements to, to provide four feet of access to, around each of the buildings.
Okay.
I think it's only in that one location, just around that little side.
Right. I'll second your question.
And, and once again this evening, and I forgot to ask for comment, anybody here to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against?
The ghosts of former residents, maybe.
Ken comes running back around the corner.
We let your slider now.
Oh, Lord. I think I've actually done this before. All right, is that the, the whole of your, so approval with?
I need a second.
Second by Ricky Sahadi. Discussion? All those in favor? No, not all those in favor.
Yes.
John Frank? Yes, got you.
Yes.
Jim Colkins, yes. Dan DePere, yes. Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Perera, yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're one for one.
That's, that's your, your, your batting.
You're in an N, one hundred and sixty-six.
The only one who's here today.
I'll put it on the back of my business card. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Do, do, do. Ah, yes. Our rules and regulations, we get a copy of those during, we have the, we have the standing ones, rules and regulations.
Do you have, do you all, you all have a package of the proposed new rules and regulations? I have the fee schedule. I don't have the rules and regulations. Yeah, I didn't have it either. You don't have it? Table with that, okay.
Table, discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion to table discussion on the rules and regulations. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've just got here twenty minutes early.
Yep, John Frank.
Earlier, let's say earlier.
Yes, so we're tabled the fees too, again?
No, no, you can discuss fees if you guys want to.
Okay, we've got that chart.
No, that was, sorry, that's on the, the matter of the, the rules and regulations.
Yes.
Jim Colkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Perera, yes. Okay. That just, you're right, that's just saved us twenty minutes. Ah, save table. Ah, all right, the fee schedule, darn it. This has been tabled eighty-three times.
So I can introduce you to what, what the proposal was before you. I supplied also with a proposed new fee schedule. The last two fee schedules dating back to two thousand and fourteen, where you can see most of the fees that date back to two thousand and fourteen carry through the revision of, of the twenty-twenty-one fee schedule. There's only one or two items that had changed. And of course, you know, in that, in that timeframe from two thousand and fourteen until now, the fees have not gone up. So I had gone and looked at a number of different municipalities, their fee schedules, and looked at the way that they calculate and deal with fees and zoning requests. A number of the municipalities, towns, or, or cities actually charge per section of relief.
Yeah.
So if you needed a front yard setback, you paid the fee. If you needed a front yard setback and lot coverage, you'd be paying three sections of relief, which, giving a menu like that and having to calculate fees is just absurd to me. The town of Secon, for instance, you have to actually submit a separate application for each section of relief. So if you needed four variances, you actually submit four different petitions, four different fees, four different butters lists. It's, it's a bit insane.
Oh, my God.
History has shown, and you all know it, the city is very good to applicants when they come to the city with applying to the zoning board of appeals. Everyone tries to make it as simple as possible. The fee schedule is simple, the application is simple, but there does come a time where an increase in fees is, you know, usually required. I put together what I think is a reasonable fee schedule. By no means is that steadfast and set in stone, it's just for discussion purposes. I think what we've done over time is try to treat homeowners and residential uses very kindly, and, and I think that continues to do this as well, so that you know the planning board adopted a new fee schedule, which basically went up to about the same percentage as what you see here. On this, you would see that the biggest increases have to do with commercial variances and commercial special permits. And when you look at that, the amount of relief normally required and the amount of time, effort to deal with these things, it, it costs more money to deal with them. So again, I think this is reasonable. We can have a discussion about it tonight. You can now take a look at what's been presented, let it marinate, but what we did with the planning board is I asked everyone, go do your own research if, if need be, look at what other municipalities similar to ours, or even just surrounding, and see how they deal with, with these types of items. We're very kind with regards to legal notice, a butter notifications, a butter notifications, for instance, we, we normally would, would pay for all of that in-house that comes out of the filing fee. Other municipalities, you write a blank check for a butter notification.
Correct.
And then, again, that's, you know, I can't tell you how much it's going to be. We have, we'll get in a butters list, and then we'll tell you what it is, and now we're chasing people for a check, similarly to what we do for advertising here, but we just break it up evenly to everybody. So something to look at when you do go do your own investigation is look at the comprehensive submission, whether it's a butter notification, legal ad, or how they break down the sections of relief and what the cost is for each one of those things.
Yeah. Yeah, when this, when this first came up, about three months ago now, I did, I went out, took a look at Taunton, New Bedford. I looked at all the cities in the, in the county, a couple of the larger counties. Swansea, I just was appalled, but might have something to do with their city, town manager. You know, I went up Brockton, get a little out of range. We're not out of range here. In fact, we're fair. Spending a good deal of time on the other side of, of the counter, the other side of the, the table here. In much bigger cities, these are great, because when you go to apply in, in a Cambridge or, or Boston, it's so baffling in the way in which you have to, you have to put your fee schedule, you have to calculate all the fees up and hope it's right when you get up to the counter, because they'll just send you, you know, send you out.
Yeah, calculating fees sometimes is more important than preparing the plan.
Right. Well, to some of the municipalities, yeah. So I don't know if anybody else, we've had it for a while. We do have some new members of the, the board at this point. I have no problem if everybody wants to take the next few weeks to look at it. I think we're perfectly in line here. I'm comfortable with these.
Mr. Chairman? I did the same thing. I, I did some homework and looked at them. I mean, these are well within range. I mean, we've had it for a while. I don't know if anybody else has had the opportunity.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just if I can ask Dan, as you say, you know, you try to take it easy, so to speak, on residential.
Yep.
And increase commercial more. But going by raw percentages, when you go by division of property, additional units and so forth, those are one hundred percent increases. I mean, not, not on the raw figure. Obviously, the thousand dollars for commercial is much more money.
Right.
But when you go by percentages, a lot of these residential units, residential proposals are one hundred percent increases.
Yep. Yeah.
So, so I guess my question is, how is that taking it easy on residential units?
Because six hundred is still cheap. So I didn't recommend that all variances be one thousand dollars.
No, I understand.
Which at the end of the day, for, for what, for what applicants are receiving from this board, the value of, of the relief being granted to them is far beyond that six hundred dollars. The four hundred dollars that we're starting from was so antiquated, again, dating back to two thousand and fourteen.
Right.
So look at it, look at it that way.
Okay, I was looking at it, I was looking at where it says plus two hundred, Dan, and then plus one hundred. Those are one hundred percent increases.
Yep, well, because we were charging before one hundred dollars per additional lot. Sorry? And where in other towns, they would require an entirely separate fee. You wouldn't even have just the smaller addition by lot. You would have another whole application fee for every section of relief or every section, every lot that you were trying, trying to get.
All right, and the last, the last question then is, a special permit to residential and commercial, you have residential developments at eight hundred dollars, which again is almost a one hundred percent increase, not quite, but almost.
Yep. So if we look at what was there before was residential developments, four fifty, and then fifty dollars per unit. So that is for a residential development like we had just seen with the sixteen units. That's not individual lots. So when we're looking at multifamily residential developments, that needs to be, the, the time that everyone spends to deal with looking at those things, they're not simple and straightforward applications. What we did in the planning board, the way site plan review is set up now, any site plan review, South Coast Marketplace, the entire development, a three hundred dollar filing fee for site plan review. You want to put a shed in your backyard, and you have to go file for site plan review, it's three hundred dollars.
You know, I appreciate that.
So, so we're just trying to, and again, this is a proposal for you all to discuss.
Right, I guess my, my, my only comment is that I have not done the homework. I mean, John Frank did it, and Joe Perera did it, and I guess these fees, you know, the raw numbers are not out of line. I'm just wondering if in one fell swoop, we should increase it like that, or if it should be gradual.
That's up for you all to decide. That's up to you all to decide.
And we have that decision. We, we, we haven't made a significant change to these fees, as Dan has pointed out, for a very long time. And, you know, it, our payroll's not as cheap as it used to be. Nothing is as cheap as it used to be in order to, to cover all this stuff, even copying and, you know, everything that goes into this.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with it, actually, yeah. It's just, I mean, my concern was that it's, some of these are drastic jumps. Usually when we increase fees, it goes, you know, not in one fell swoop, but gradually. But as you're saying, it's been quite a while since they were increased.
I, I think we can probably live with these for a few years. We'll, we'll see. But I think we, we have to take a closer look at them going forward. I think, you know, maybe not annually, but, you know, we, we should really be taking, taking a look and seeing what's going on. A lot of this is going to come down to how much is, how much is coming before us. You know, really, what's, what's the volume that's, that's coming in here? Listen, some municipalities are holding two, two zoning board hearings a month because they got so much going on. Don't think for a moment that that could not possibly happen to us.
Make a motion to deny.
So Dan, so then the last, the last thing I'll review with Dan is that you've compared, so raw figures-wise, we're in line with other communities.
Yeah. And again, what I recommended was that you all go take a look at that.
Could, could I have?
Because again, this is just an initiation to have you start discussing it. I have nothing to do with it. This is, this is for you to determine what, what you feel.
But these figures that you put together are in line with that.
Absolutely.
That, does the authority to set rates, rate like here, or does it, is it a matter of ordinance?
Starts here first.
It starts there. So we would make recommendations to the city council?
I, I don't think it has to, because it's not in ordinance, it's in your, in your rules and regulations, we would at least as a courtesy, send this to the council.
Yes.
Because we're courteous.
Process was.
Yep. So what's our wishes? Do we want, you guys want us to do some looking around? That's everybody.
Yeah, I, I didn't do as deep a dive as you did, but I did like the Bedford Taunton, you know, the bigger comparable. And, and this is still very low.
Just for the heck of it.
Very reasonable.
Look at Secon's for the heck of it.
Hey, well, you know that Kadim guy?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion either to proceed with this or table it for another month?
I mean, um...
I move we accept.
Yeah, I see no reason. I was just going to say, I see no reason to table.
I'm sorry.
So we have a motion by Jim Calkins to accept and second by Rikki Sahadi. Any further discussion? You did, did you second it?
One of us did. It doesn't matter. We both did.
Now, now I'm getting, now I'm getting David Hassad disease because whoever sits in those two chairs all sound the same. It's hilarious. That being the case, on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Rikki Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes. We're done. Thank you. Good work on that one. You look surprised. What else we got?
Citizens input.
Mr. Chairman, I move the waiving of the, reading of the minutes and acceptance of the...
Citizens input first.
Too much. You want to put them together?
You're going to ask.
Citizens input.
The next item on the agenda is to ask of the citizens.
Is there any citizens input? You know, there may be. Somebody may have written something down and we didn't get it.
They're not here.
They're not here. In that case, that would be the reading of the minutes.
Yes.
We have two months.
Are we doing it month by month or both together?
Very speedy. So that is for the January and February minutes. The motion is to waive the reading of the minutes and accept.
Second.
We have a second? Dan DePere? Discussion, hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Rikki Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second.
Second, guys.
John Frank? John Frank. Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Rikki Sahadi?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone.